The meeting will please come to order. Hello, everyone. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. And on behalf of all of my colleagues and council staff, we would like to thank you for joining us this evening. Today is Thursday, March the 16th. For public comment, there will be a Google Form signup link in the chat for anyone who would like to speak. This evening, public comment will take place after the treasures report. We will have our opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harms way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. This time, we will recite our Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman White.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Here.
Councilman Mills.
Present.
Councilman Spadola. Councilwoman Bracy.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Nine present and four absent.
At this time, I would like to acknowledge former council member Bud Frill, who has joined us, and also former Chief of Staff Daniel Walker. Thank you for joining us. At this time, I'll accept the motion for the suspension of the rules.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules for the purpose of our mayor to present his budget address. On the question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Yolanda McCoy.
Sooner it.
At this time, I'd like to assign Councilmembers Cabrera and Bracy to escort Mayor Michael S. Prizicki, and Councilmember Johnson to escort First Lady Mrs. Prizicki into chambers. Mayor Prizicki, thank you for joining us.
Mr. President, thank you for having me. It's been a long time. And I, you know, it's funny because I, I was trying to remember when the last time we did this in person. And I had a, um, I think I had a notion that we had done it more recently, and then everybody told me it's been about three or four years. So I'm happy to be here. First, I'd like to do, and I know we've semi-done this, but this is National Women's Month.
Yes.
And I think that there are a couple of women I'd like to mention. Is okay with you?
Yes, sir. Hopefully, you, you say the right one first.
Betty, my wife Betty, who's put up with it. Very importantly, my, my day-wife, Tanny Washington, who runs, who, who runs this place and makes it look easier than it, than it really is. I'd also like to recognize all the staff members of mine who are here and my directors. Would you kindly just stand and take a bow? These, uh, these individuals just do an extraordinary job for our city. I'm fond of, I'm fond of saying you can't win without good players. And I can tell you, we have good players. So we, we feel we're equal, equal to the task of winning to meet the expectations of the people of the city. Mr. President, members of council, I am really pleased to report that the state of the city is better than we could ever have imagined just a short while ago. Tonight, I will describe the progress that this administration and this council have made together. We certainly don't always agree on some of the means and methods, but we certainly agree on the goals. A safe, healthy, and prosperous city in which our children can grow and reach their God-given potential. Two years ago, there were reasons for us to be very uneasy about the state of affairs locally and nationally. The pandemic exacted a price on all sectors of the economy. It changed the way Americans live their lives and how we worked as well. All of this affected the fortunes of America's cities. Working from home has negatively impacted wage tax revenue in America's largest cities, up to 60% during the pandemic, but it's leveled out at 25% of all employee time spent working at home. Empty office buildings have resulted in fewer customers for our small businesses and lower tax assessments on appeal, inevitably lowering property tax revenue. The post-pandemic reality foreshadows a declining tax base and future fiscal challenges for cities across America, and Wilmington assuredly is not exempt. But through this once-in-a-lifetime crisis, our city's economy withstood the national headwinds that threaten the revenues of city after city across the nation. Construction of apartments, hotels, and restaurants have energized Wilmington's economy. Building permits had averaged an astonishing $253 million each and every year for the past three years. The downtown district, the riverfront, and most notably, the neighborhoods have all thrived economically. When would you have imagined that Wilmington would be chosen by Condon Ast as one of the 23 best cities in America to visit? And featured by Forbes as one of the 22 best places to travel in America? And repeatedly featured in Virginia and Philly magazines for our restaurants, hotels, and amenities? Washington DC thrillist lists Wilmington among seven cities to visit this winter. Now, the Chase Field House has become an unexpected economic driver for the city, drawing an astonishing 1.5 million participants and visitors to Wilmington in 2022 alone, while the Christina Riverwalk counted well over 1 million visitors this past year. In the town, town, in the downtown district, Coyn joined Lafayette, Bardella, and Bardella Steak and a host of other fine dining destinations. The Chancery joined Deco as a premier food hall where our residents can socialize and eat a relaxing meal. SZA rehearsed for a week in Wilmington at the $20 million Pine Buck Studios, which opened just this past year. I'm gonna give a test to see how many of you know who SZA is. But she's major hot, and she was here for a week. And I called Scott and I said, "I want to stop over and see her." He said, "She just left yesterday." In our neighborhoods, unprecedented investments have occurred. In the northeast, in the Riverside area, $150 million is being invested in Amani Village, Eastside Charter, and the new Kingswood Community Center. Amani Village, an existing, an existing 140-unit purpose-built community under the Reach Riverside umbrella, is now seeking to expand one of the most ambitious housing projects in the city's history. On the east side, this administration has committed $20 million of ARPA funds for up to 150 new and redeveloped houses for our residents. Habitat for Humanity has repaired or rebuilt 49 houses to date for city homeowners, with another 40 in process of schedule for repairs. This is attending to the folks who have houses who are in disrepair after years and years and years, and who cannot afford to really fix them. And so, our program with Habitat is you go in there, 10,000, 15,000, whatever it takes to get these houses up to a level where you'd be proud to live there, and it's been a wonderful program. Overgrown alleys have been cleaned, and the Hattie Fallon Park has been reclaimed. The governor has committed almost $100 million to the rebuilding of Bancroft School, which of course is well underway today with the steel, the foundation, the steel up. The Wilmington Housing Authority and the Community Education Building have jointly purchased the Elwin Building on 11th Street to turn it into a social services support center for our residents. Now, we continue to work with community partners like Central Baptist CDC to rebuild our historic east side. And we've asked the state in this year's bond bill request for one and a half million dollars to remake the Herman Holloway Park, which hopefully will include a likeness of the iconic senator himself. On Lower Hilltop, the Wilmington Land Bank has committed millions of dollars to rebuild another of our long-forgotten neighborhoods. It has acquired approximately 40 parcels, including five rehabilitated units nearing completion. In those alleys where nothing good happens, we've gated them. We've had Ellen I go out there and gate those alleys so people can't go back there and do what they do. Abandoned houses are being closed or demolished, and open space is being created. Now, 54 new affordable units just opened in West Center City. Beautiful west, beautiful units over there. And 72 dilapidated apartments are about to undergo a complete rehabilitation. I mean, a very, very significant, tens of millions of dollar rehabilitation on the west side. Despite the recent working trend of working from home, our major employers are holding firm to their commitment to Wilmington. JP Morgan Chase alone has invested $250 million in their campus on the city. We applaud Chase and our other employers for their unwavering commitment to Wilmington. Other cities have reacted to reduce office space by encouraging apartment development. But while Washington DC has as its goal 15,000 new apartments by 2028, Wilmington, just one-tenth its size, has already built 2,400 since this administration took office. Nearly 1,000 new apartments currently in production continue to bolster the city's future vitality. And it should be noting, and it should be noted, that in doing so, we have not displaced one single resident anywhere in this city. Strengthening our neighborhoods and our neighbors has been an overarching goal of this administration and of this council. We have worked together to bring the impressive work of the Community-Based Public Safety Collective in Wilmington from Newark, New Jersey, parenthetically my hometown. Under the leadership of Dr. Deborah Mason, 18 of our citizens will become the frontline trained professionals prepared to interrupt the violence that plagues our neighborhoods without having to depend entirely on our police officers. And, and it should be noted that council, council was a driver, a very significant driver, Mr. President, in getting this initiative started, and I extend my appreciation for that. Having said that, violent crime has actually been reduced to the lowest level in memory, almost exclusively through the work of our police department. While the nation's cities across America in 2022 experienced a drop of 6% from the previous year, Wilmington saw a 62% drop in homicides and a 17-year low in overall violent crime during that same year. Our new police chief, Alfredo Campos, has notably implemented deployment strategies that will strengthen our ongoing commitment to community policing, an objective I know we all share. I continue to work with council regarding police methods and practices. Our commitment to civilian oversight of our police department is strong, but is limited by the law enforcement's Officers' Bill of Rights and changes proposed in Dover. But nonetheless, we are making progress in building confidence between our officers and the public they serve. In any case, I believe that the WPD is and will continue to be one of the very finest departments of its size in the nation. But I remain appreciative of every one of the constructive comments and suggestion made by members of council so that we can continue to see that this department retains a level of excellence and that it retains its relationship with our community. For the first time in city's history, Wilmington is reviewing closely the fairness and inclusiveness of our government procurement process. To this end, we launched a disparity study in 2022. Our goal is to make sure the procurement, procurement system is providing minority and women-owned businesses the opportunity to bid for city-issued proposals for goods and services. We've begun to act on the recommendations of the disparity report, which was compiled by Miller 3 Consulting. I want to thank council, and especially to remember our late dear friend Rashima Dixon for working with the administration to bring about needed change. The patterns of longer-term disparity as presented in the report did not start in my administration, but it is my goal to see these practices end before I leave office. I pledge to continue working with city council for as long as it takes to get this job done. Along these lines, however, it should be noted that this administration has extended over $4 million in credit and grants to minority developers and businesses in the recent year. In this year's budget, we increased funding for our clean teams to continue the program to keep our neighborhoods appearances worthy of the children whose fut- future we claim to value. Wilmington's HBCU Week will again provide tens of millions of dollars in scholarships to our children aspiring to attend our nation's historically black colleges and universities. They will join the 22,000 who have attended our college fair since 2017, the 4,300 who have been admitted through this nationally recognized program, and those who have been offered almost $35 million in scholarships thus far. This pa- this past year, we took Wilmington's show on the road at the invitation of Disney. We took it down to Disney World and showed them what we do, where 8,600 students down there attended their very first HBCU college fair, where $11 million in scholarships were offered to those students. It was a very, very heartening experience, I can assure you. There's much we've accomplished together that receives little mention. A sewer agreement, there's nothing glamorous about sewers, is there? With Newcastle County eluded our predecessors for almost 20 years, until this year, when the county executive and I determined to negotiate a fair agreement that will endure for a decade. Reassessment, property reassessment is finally being conducted after we reluctantly joined a suit against our friends at the county. For the first time since 1983, there will be tax fairness for our city property owners and for property owners throughout the county. In 2017, our fund balance, the fund balance of the city was $34 million, less than that required by rating agencies to maintain our bond rating. By year-end this year, we project that we will have increased our fund balance to a very healthy $75 million, or 40% of the budget, well above the 25% required by rating agencies. The goal of this administration is to improve every service that we provide and upgrade every property we own. We don't always succeed, but we try. To this end, we have thoroughly reorganized our land use department led by Jeff Starkey in an effort to accre- increase efficiency and staff accountability. We're very optimistic about the prospect of this reorganization. The Rodney Reservoir is one example of a city property needing our attention. It has been an unsafe, unsightly, and poorly maintained structure for too long. We intend to demolish the reservoir and transform the site into a beautiful city park. And to that end, we intend to fully engage with the community for a planning exercise for the design of the site. Now, our capital assets, including our parks, are generally in excellent condition. Even the building we're in tonight, we walked in here and Betty, who hasn't been here in a number of years, said, "Oh, my God, I remember, I don't remember it being this beautiful down here." And I said, "It's changed." And that's what we try to do. If we own it, we want to try to keep it as, uh, keep it up as, as much as possible. But some of our firehouses, Chief Looney, after having been neglected for years, are not in very good condition and will be receiving our much-needed attention. One was completed last year. One rehabilitation is now underway, and another is in pre-construction. I hope that we will be able to get these next two in, in condition that is worthy of the people who do the great job they do for us. Under the orchestration of Tina Batts, we've constructed a beautiful performance stage in a park-like setting at the Urban Arts Artist Exchange on the city's east side, and you really should see it if you haven't. It's beautiful, absolutely beautiful. We will complete the next phase of Rodney Square revitalization this summer, and Denrick has finally agreed to improve the aesthetics at H Fletcher Brown Park along the Brandiwine River, which, a beautiful place, but it was just poorly maintained. Many thanks to Delda for their extraordinary partnership and cooperation through the two-year reconstruction of I-95. Together, we paved almost 38 miles of city streets. Delda is restoring all of the recreational facilities that were previously in the highway right-of-way, and the decorative fencing along the highway has been a welcome improvement, aesthetic improvement. Now, we've asked council to support policy changes that respond to our changing times. Residency requirements must yield to new employment realities. Owners of vacant housing must be held to account for dragging down our neighborhoods by being charged more appropriately for the damage they inflict. Our fees must be updated to meet our budgetary demands of delivering regulatory and enforcement services. I extend my sincere gratitude again to council for its cooperation and support of our efforts. Along with removing the employment barrier of residency, we must remain competitive with other employers. Our negotiations with our union employees have been productive, but necessarily costly given the inflationary environment we find ourselves in. A citywide compensation study will be completed this spring to help guide the compensation of our valued employees. As to our budget for this year, we will enjoy a short-lived surplus and therefore require no tax increase. Assuming the prescribed revenue enhancements, we can escape deficits in FY '24 and '25. But starting in '26 and beyond is when the bills will come due. We will simply need every additional source of revenue to balance our budgets in the very near future. To this end, we will ask council to approve three new sources of revenue. A $1 ticket tax on all events in the city, an increase on our hotel tax from 2% to 3%, and an overall increase in fees. The effect of these revenues will be almost $4 million annually and get us closer to long-term financial viability. As promised, we will continue to engage with the state to find new funding sources. A reality we must get used to is that based on the long-term capital needs of our aging sewer and water infrastructure, without external revenue sources, our water fund will require increasing rates on a fairly regular basis. Utility Citizen Advisory Board, UCAB, has recommended an increase of 6%. We are proposing to council a rate increase of just 5.7, along with a 6% increase in stormwater fees. So, in spite of the challenges we've faced together, not to mention the fact that we had to bring three brand-new members on during this time, Mr. President, in spite of these challenges, we have fostered unprecedented economic growth. challenges, we have fostered unprecedented economic growth, greatly enhanced the condition of our neighborhoods, improved housing, reduced crime, stabilized our finances, and helped thousands of our children to go to college. I don't mean to suggest that this administration deserves credit for every success I've listed here tonight, but assuredly, we deserve credit for creating the environment for success. We deserve credit for the vision needed to succeed. We deserve credit for giving confidence to the investment community that Wilmington is worth every dollar they've invested. You and this administration together, working together through the pushing and pulling that is the inevitable part of governance, can be proud of everything this government has achieved over this past year. I know I am, and you ought to be too. Thank you very much.
Son of a...
This time, I'll accept the motion to return to the regular order of business.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that council return to the regular order of business on the question.
Aye.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This time, we have the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
March 2nd, 2023, City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo to second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Cara Granado, deputy city clerk.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This time, we have our city treasures report.
March 16th, 2023, total investment $480,682,252.24. Total cash on hand $12,225,282.14. Grand total $492,907,534.38 submitted by Dwayne Sims, city treasurer.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This time, we'll move into public comment. We do have two community members who are in council chambers with us, so I will call them first, and then we will go to our virtual residence.
Greetings.
Thank you for joining us.
My name is Earl E. Tate, Deacon Earl E. Tate, II, and I'm here, and I'm here to say, to say that, that we have, we have a lot, we have a lot going on for us now. We have, we have, we have a large amount of money granted to us for the, for the roads and highways and streets to make them much better. And, and also, and also, what, what, what I was thinking about for the streets and everything, the same way, the same, the same way we got, we got, we got, we got for the roads, for the roads that, that we can't put the speed bumps on, put, put, put on, put on the road, like, like when you go into a tow booth, that, 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 that "drrr, drrr, drrr," make, make, make you think, make you think that you had to, make you think that you had to pay a toll or something, slow you down, slow you down, because there's a lot of people out here that, that is driving so fast, you wonder, you wonder where the fire, where the fire, because, because, because we got, we got so many lives out here being taken away, being taken away by, by, by people driving fast, and, and the people that drive fast don't think, they don't think about, they don't think about the lives, the lives that they take and everything. So, so we got, so we got to make them, we got to make them think, and, and we got, we got, we got to put them on, like, like up there on Second, Second and Lincoln and everything, 25th Street, 26th Street, and so, I'm not talking about all over the city, I'm talking about in certain spots, in certain spots. That, that's what we got to do. So like, so like to end it, to end it, I end it with this form, the kill, the medicine of death. I call it, I, I call them the killing medicine. There, there are many kinds of, of these medicines, some, some that is even injected into, into the bodies, those, these days of life, they, they are, there are many ways of, of a person, of a person harming their body. We, we have, we have grass, which is, which is pot or marijuana, we have, there is hash seeds, angel dust, LSD, cocaine, heroin, just to name a few. These killing medicines can, 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 can be, can be, can be smoked, snorted, inhale, swallow, like, like some, like some STDs are, are killing medicine, transmitted a, a disease by, a disease like, like LSD, LSD, we use them, we use them the same needle to get, to get, to give people HIV, AIDS, most, most of all, bringing, bringing new life into the world of similar, of similar cause or effect, the killing of innocent bystanders. That, 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 that the thing, that the thing that people use, use to get high with, they, they do not realize the whole, the whole time they are killing the life that is within them. Most, most deadly than, than any drug may, may also be, be the words that we use, that we use towards one another, words that are like a two-edged sword, that cut very deep. So, it almost, it's almost like dropping arsenic into an open wound, because it, because it seeps deeper into your skin, it melts, it melts your bones, just, just like killing medicine, that, 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 that's what happens when, when you use discouraging words towards one another. So the next time you, you talk or speak to, to someone, remember a kind word, a kind word, with, with, with love always and new lease on the life. It, it's not one of those killing medicine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next in council chambers, we have Carrie Carter. May I come forward, please? Please introduce yourself when you come forward, and please watch your step as you come onto the podium. Just as a final reminder, your timeframe is around three minutes for public comment.
Hello, council. Thank you for having me tonight. I just want to shed light on something that I witnessed. I am here standing in the gap for the unsheltered people here in our city. I believe that there is a great need to help these individuals. About a month and a half ago, I witnessed about three nonprofit organizations being told that they could not serve in the area that they were serving on Poplar Street, one being one in seven billion. They actually just purchased portable showers and washing machines for these individuals. They were told that they could not stand there, or they could not give out their goods to these people in need because they were blocking the way for employees. Mind you, it only happens on Sundays, and nobody is open on Sundays, so I don't, I don't know where that came from, but the police department told them they could not do that. And I have gone every Sunday since to see if they were being helped and they were not, so their hands have been tied. I just, I have called the chief and I've left messages and just inquiring about, you know, if I was wrong about this, but I believe that they need to be supported in a way like no other before. Surrounding areas have very deteriorating populations, and I think that we can embody our homeless individuals, our unsheltered individuals in a way that we never have before. Isaiah 58:7 says, "Share your food with the hungry and give shelter to the homeless; give clothes to those who need them, and don't hide from relatives who need your help." People want to work, they want homes, they want stability, they want programs. I know that you all have been working on programs to increase the community. I think we should not overshadow these people, I think we should help these, this population as well. I have plenty ideas, if anybody would like to hear them, I would love to partner with you guys. Community centers, I've looked into, and I could help utilize the ARPA funds efficiently. So I just want to let you guys know that there is a need for our homeless population here in this city. I've talked with them, I've been with them, I've been getting to know them, they are good people, they are the faces that you see, even if you, if you don't even think that they are homeless, they are. Just consider the shoes of the unsheltered, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we do have your contact information in case any council members want to reach out. Virtually, we have Christina Kelly. Ms. Kelly, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you for joining us.
Of course, thank you for an opportunity to speak tonight. I did want to speak first in opposition to Agenda Item Number 0288, which would be the increase in fees that the mayor spoke to. The reason that I oppose this legislation is not because I think that increasing fees is necessarily a bad idea, but because I did notice that these fees, when it comes to construction-related businesses, were increased very little versus, for example, radio stations increasing from $600 to $1,000, or newspaper distributors increasing from $542 to over $900. So my concerns lie with, A, where we got these calculations for these new fees, and B, what the, I guess, rush is to increase them so drastically in one-year cycle when the mayor just got done telling us that we are going to enjoy a slight surplus for the next few years. My, my suggestion would be that maybe we either lower the increase in fees, or, or we try to kind of stagger this increase in, but I don't think that when we are experiencing extreme economic deficiencies at this time, that this is a, a good move to make in terms of attracting new businesses to our city, unless, you know, we're only worried about attracting Fortune 500 companies and major real estate developers. My other topic that I'd like to just, to quickly bring up here, I did tag all city council members in a video that I posted to my social media a couple of weeks ago now, and I wanted to bring it up in a public forum, that Wilmington police officers are once again on video slamming a gentleman down to the ground, holding a knee on his back while he actively seized, while being handcuffed. They said, the video is about four minutes long of this gentleman actively seizing while officers are failing to provide him with medical care. So I did want to bring that to everybody's attention, and hopefully, we can get the city council to maybe speak with our new chief about, you know, decreasing the instances of extreme police violence against our community members. Thank you again for a chance to speak.
Okay, thank, thank you. And WITN, do we have anyone else who has signed up virtually? Okay, thank you. This time, we will move into legislative business.
Council president, may I be excused?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance 23009, Agenda 0283, in order to establish a rate of taxation on real property and taxable property of public utilities for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023, and ending on June 30 of 2024.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance establishing a rate of taxation on real property and taxable property of public utilities for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023, ending on June 30 of 2024.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading, ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance 23010, Agenda 0284, in order to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2024 through 2029 inclusive.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2024 through 2029 inclusive.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading, ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance 23011, Agenda 0285, in order to adopt a capital budget for the fiscal year 2024.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to adopt a capital budget for the fiscal year 2024.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading, and ordinance and refers to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance 23012, Agenda 0286, in order to adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023, and ending on June 30 of 2024.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023, and ending on June 30 of 2024.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading, and ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance 23013, Agenda 0287, in order to amend Chapter 45 of the city code regarding store system rates and charges, water rates and charges, and stormwater rates and charges for fiscal year 2024.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to amend Chapter 45 of the city code regarding store system rates and charges, water rates and charges, and stormwater rates and charges for fiscal year 2024.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading, and ordinance and refers to Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Ordinance 23014, Agenda...
Ordinance twenty three zero fourteen, agenda zero two eight eight, in ordinance to amend chapters four, five, and twelve of the Wilmington city code to increase certain fees.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend chapters four, five, and twelve of the Wilmington city code to increase certain fees.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading ordinance and refer it to the ec- Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Uh, and that completes my items tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you. This time we will move to petitions and communications, starting with Councilmember White.
Mr. President, may I be excused?
Yes, you may.
Mr. President, uh, counsel, in honor of Women's History Month, I wanted to salute the women. Who serve on this council and the women who work with council uh to help us get this done. And I also like to salute our past members of council. Uh, Loretta Wash, Rashima Dixon, and Linda Gray. You know, there's while there's a lot of people in this country who wishes to vanquish the accomplishments of women. And their contributions to this culture by banning books, changing classroom curriculum. You know, it's it's it it won't work. Because of the work of our grandmothers, our mothers, our aunts and uncles who paved the way, I'm sorry, our aunts. Who've paved the way to instill in us a legacy of accomplishments and due diligence. Political bigotry will not work. So, women, when you've accomplished all that you want to accomplish here on earth, I'd like you to think about shooting for the moon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, um, I just have a few um thank yous that I wanted to share. And one is to Downtown Visions. I want to thank them for um honoring me and acknowledging me for Women's History Month. Uh, so to Mr. um Majetti and his executive board, I want wanted to publicly thank them for honoring me for um Women's um. Uh, History Month. And I also want to thank um Dr. Jamila Smith. Um, her organization also honored me for Women's History Month, um Journey Unveiled. So on today, I just wanted to thank them. And I wanted to also just uh say happy Women's um History Month to all of my council colleagues, to all the females. Um, to our staff as well and to all those women out there that have been doing great things um in our city as well as our state. And again, happy Women's History Month. Thank you, Mr. President, may I be excused?
Yes, you may, and happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Fields.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure you can hear me. Thank you, Council President, um, please excuse my voice. Um, I do I do have a couple of items that I would like to um bring to um. To mention, I have a, trying to get to, sorry. And excuse me for being late, but I was coming from therapy. So, so, you know, keep me in prayer with um the healing of my knee.
We will.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So, community meeting, West Center City Neighborhood Association, president, stakeholders, and all interested persons are invited to attend a community meeting. On Saturday, March the eighteenth, twenty twenty three, from ten AM to eleven thirty AM. William Hicks Anderson, Community Center, five oh one North Madison Street. I also have a QR code available for a survey. And um, you know, this is going to be a monthly meeting, hopefully my constituents will take it on. Also, um, after that meeting, it's called Bagels with Brigida. Let's chat it up with our local city council representative. Councilwoman Brigida Fields will be here Saturday from twelve PM to two PM to connect with you and hear your concerns. I will be at Books and Bagels, eleven thirty nine West Seventh Street, Wilmington, Delaware, one nine eight oh five. So if you can't meet me at William Hicks Anderson Community Center, you can definitely meet me on the other side of ninety five at Books and Bagels. Um, and I like tea. Um, and I do have a quote. And this is for Women's Month. I like that one. Girls are capable of doing everything men are capable of doing. Sometimes they have more imagination than men. Catherine Johnson, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Uh, thank you. Actually, I have two things that I would like to uh bring to everyone's attention. I have a sixth district town hall meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, March twenty first at six PM. This meeting will take place at the Claymore Senior Center in the Bayard Square area. The address is five oh four South Clayton Street. Um, we will basically introducing our new chief, wanting to make certain everyone knows who he is. He is our former uh sector captain and we're going to make certain we introduce the new sector captain. All our leadership, all the leadership will be there from each of the uh communities. So we wanted to make certain everyone knows who they are, so they can then start attending meetings and events. Okay, the other thing I would like to bring to everyone's attention is that the Wilmington Police Department will be having a community resource fair. On Thursday, March twenty third, from four to six PM at the MSK Community Center. The address is ten oh nine Sycamore Street. Uh, if you're not aware, it is on Sycamore Street, the one thousand block, and it has bright pink doors, so you can't miss it. Uh, this uh resource fair has actually been going on throughout the city. This is the first time it's going to be visiting sixth district. Um, I'm very happy to to uh entertain this group, I can't wait for them to get there. Since everyone has all of this to say about Women's History Month, I have nothing but. Uh, I think I read somewhere that um if you want something talked about, give it to a man. If you want something done, give it to a woman.
Can we shut her mic off, please? Thank you, thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Good evening, everyone, uh, as a just a scheduling matter, um, as we just had the mayor's budget address. Uh, we are now, we're uh in budget season, so the first uh budget hearing will be uh Wednesday, um, Wednesday, March twenty ninth at four, four thirty.
Four thirty?
Oh, April the third, sorry, that was that was a change day, April the third is the first, we actually pushed it back a week. Uh, April the third, um, and the first uh budget hearings will be uh city council, mayor's office, and also, I believe treasurer's office. Um, and the rest of the agenda of the rest of the budget hearings will be posted on the city council website, so please uh stay tuned. Um, as as, you know, um, you we we ask, we we look forward to public engagement and process. Um, uh, uh, otherwise, that's uh, of course, happy Women's History Month. And um, as always, uh, we are looking, uh, especially on the West Side corridor, we're looking, we're going to be organizing uh some more community meetings in the future. Around the Lincoln Street, Union Street corridor. Um, there's recently been some um quality of life uh issues, and so we'll be addressing them with uh neighborhood leadership. I'm talking about um ways we can move forward as a community and um, you know, uh, make sure we continue to have a safe and inclusive uh west side. So uh, stay tuned for the dates, I'm working with uh different neighborhood leaders and business leaders on um organizing a meeting soon. Take care.
Thank you, Councilmember Nathan Field.
Yes, Council President, I want to mention three things. First, I want to make sure people know about the first annual Charlie Square Five K, which takes place on April twenty second at nine AM. In Charlie Square. And I'm very excited about this event because it is the the first time it's ever been held and we have some very enthusiastic newcomers to the neighborhood that have. Made a big mark in building up the running scene in Charlie Square and this is going to be a very exciting event. Again, that's April twenty second at nine AM. Number two, I want to give special thanks to Public Works. For the fast work they did on fixing up sidewalks around Luther Towers one and two. Recently, I met with about forty residents at Luther Towers one with with along with our state rep, Namdi Chokwocha. And sidewalk issues came up and there were several where trees were really burrowing under the sidewalk. And the a couple of individuals at Public Works are so efficient in this situation. And these sidewalks were completely fixed in two weeks. And the residents at Luther Towers are very excited and 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 I want to convey. Uh, my thanks and their thanks to Public Works. And number three, I want to just make a make a pitch to encourage residents to patronize local diners and restaurants. There's six or seven or eight or ten around the city, small diners, restaurants, local restaurants, not national chains. They're the heart of what makes a small town a small town, and a lot of them are struggling. Because of COVID, because of inflation. The price of eggs has skyrocketed and they need business and so. I encourage anybody, if you have, you know, once a month, once every two weeks, stop in, buy coffee, buy a meal. It just it it adds to the character of Wilmington. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to uh give a big thank you to uh Chief Campos and the Wilmington PD, the Cold Case Unit. Uh, five years ago, my my family experienced a tragedy, a younger cousin killed uh right on Twenty Third and Market in his in his apartment, right in front of his young child. And it it went unresolved for years and years and because of the the diligent work of the the Cold Case Unit, Detective Mary Quinn. Cold Case Unit Investigator Stephen Rizzo and Detective Devin Jones for going above and beyond and solving the case and 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 helping to bring this uh assailant to justice. So I appreciate it and just want to say thank you and keep up the great work. I know they don't hear it always and it's not something that happens all the time, you know, once it goes years, it doesn't get solved, but they because of their work, so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of my family and my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy.
Yes, thank you, I just have a couple of quick things. Um, Saturday morning, um, at Penn Cinema, I am hosting a ladies movie. Um, outing, uh, screening of uh Creed Three in partnership with Councilwoman Xanthia Oliver. Um, there is a link on my social media that you can use to register, um, seating is very limited, so either call the office, get in touch with. Myself or uh Councilwoman Oliver to get on the list. Um, second, I wanted to say congratulations to Canaan Baptist Church on their twentieth anniversary. Although Canaan is technically located outside of the city, many city residents attend, the church was started in the city. And Reverend Bullock and Dr. Debbie, both are city residents, so just wanted to congratulate them. And then last but not least, since everybody else has talked about it's National Women's History Month, I'm going to talk about it's National Social Workers Month. So this is just a shout out to all of those that are in the trenches doing the work of serving our community members um in the field of social work. We appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, just before I give my um my petitions and communications, does anyone know when National Men's Month is?
About say eleven months.
Every month, every month, okay, all right. Um, I just wanted to uh thank everyone who tuned in this evening. Uh, you know, here at city council, we are always trying to figure out ways that we can help our constituents even more. So if you ever have any suggestions or concerns, just please call us at three zero two five seven six twenty one forty. Your number is three zero two five seven six twenty one forty. And some of you may have uh read or heard about the uh. The tragedy that's going on in Herring Manor, right on Twenty Fourth and Market Street. I know most of us do have senior high rises in our in our district, so uh just please, if you can, go by and visit, just talk to the residents and see what's going on so that we can. Uh, help them link up with the Wilmington Police Department, maybe with other uh organizations that can just bring them some 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 hope. And that is definitely not a um a solitary incident, there are several, again, there are several residents. Several senior high rises in our in our city that are experiencing tremendous tremendous amounts of drugs and and crime and. Lack of security, lack of caring from from the management who was supposed to take care of their 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 seniors and the people who live there, so. Uh, just if you have any suggestions on how we can help as a council, uh, please just let's get together and and talk about that because. Um, if you read that article, uh, you couldn't help but just be horrified and hopefully upset about what those veterans are going through. I also want to thank the news journal for um bringing that story to light. Um, so I want to commend the reporter, Nitra Johnson, for for um sharing that story with us. Uh, on a lighter note, um, as many of you know, we are in a in the middle of our health challenge. And this past week, we were fortunate enough to be able to uh partner with Avelo Airlines. And they are going to up the ante, they are going to uh give away two pair of round trip tickets. To people who participate in our health challenge. And again, it's not necessarily about losing weight, if you just want to uh eat better, if you want to drink more water, if you want to meditate, if you want to. Improve your your spiritual well being, your mental well being, uh, all the all of the uh the requirements are on our website. So please go to our city website, see how you can uh join in, get healthy, and possibly win a uh a trip to Florida with you and a friend. Uh, so again, I want to thank uh Avelo Airlines for for partnering with us for that.
Are we eligible?
Yeah, sorry, I don't think so. First of all, I don't I don't know if you even joined the health challenge, so. Nice try, Councilmember. Um, so again, it has been extended until Memorial Day, so you can still join in and and get healthy. We have um in memory of our beloved Rashima Dixon, we are going to have a five K run. In uh in October, so please stay tuned for more details around that and how we can support. Um, everything that Rashima loved about our city and support her and her family. So again, that's going to be in October of this year. Um, and with that, I will take a, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been uh probably moving second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you for joining us.